We're going to get started a few minutes late for the District 208 Board of Education meeting. We did have the summer school graduation just prior, so anyone watching, I apologize for the slightly different timeframe. We did do, we have a call to order.
Mr. Durkin?
Present.
Mr. Durkin?
Here.
Ms. Gasko?
Ms. Ruska?
Here.
Mr. Novak?
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Ms. Allen?
Here.
We did complete a pledge of allegiance with the graduation, so with leave of the board, I think we can move on to the rest of our business. Yes, no president's report. I guess I got roll call out of order. I just kind of jumped right in. The graduation threw me off. Dr. Skinkis, do you want to start with the superintendent's report?
Sure, superintendent's report. Senate Bill SB 637, the two meetings have occurred since the June board meeting. Dr. Smetana and I met with the zoo leadership team to discuss timelines and logistics. Additionally, a preliminary site walk was conducted with representatives from the Vatni Engineering, the zoo, the school district, and our construction manager Nicholas and associates to begin developing a general concept for the project. I've also contacted Elizabeth Hennessy from Raymond James to initiate discussions about the potential use of tax-exempt capital improvement bonds to finance additional site improvements that may need to occur for safety and field usage. Remember, the original $3 million that was bonded out in 2017 has already been paid off, and we've been collecting interest on that money. So if we were to use capital development bonds to do site improvements to complete the project and the transaction with the zoo, the lease fee, they'll still be at no cost to the taxpayer. The goal is to still have our step down in place so that the taxpayers are experiencing a tax break with no added increases to their taxes. And I think we can pull that off from my initial discussions, but I will continue to meet with Ms. Hennessy.
Would that be as part of the safety bond issuance or as?
That would be separate.
Separate, okay.
Life safety bonds will probably not come until closer to '29.
Okay, '29.
Right. Assistant, this does, what this does, though, is it does fill that gap, like we were talking about when we built the kitchen, of creating that large drop-off. So now if you drop in these capital development bonds, it creates a more progressive.
Well, we had talked about additional projects as well.
Correct.
So this is not limited to field improvements?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear that it's.
Anything capital development improvement. By labeling them capital development, you can't use them for general operating expenses.
And that's part of the solar panels, too, correct?
Solar panels are not. We paid for that out of our fund balance, so that we did not mess with any other government rebates.
Oh, that's right.
Assistant superintendent report, FY 25 financials. Dr. Smetana and her baby daughter are doing well. As a reminder to the board, Dr. Smetana presented her summer reports at the June meeting, therefore there will be no assistant superintendent report tonight. Regarding the financial reports for June, due to the timing of the Fourth of July holiday, the district has not yet received the final financials for the fiscal year ending June 30th. So those actuals in the July financial report will be presented at the August board. Remind, Parent Square. I wanted to put this in there. You may see a bill come through in the future, so we had a contract with Remind, I want to say going back to 2021, right around when COVID came out. It's a, a lot of schools use it for mass communication via text, email, to get information out to students and parents. Well, Remind has been bought by Parent Square, and so FY to the board, all the stakeholders, the Remind app, which is the high school administration's faculty and parent groups use to send out communications to students and families, has recently been bought out by Parent Square. The district will transition to Parent Square during the first quarter of the school year. Dr. Freitas and his team will send information to families to assist them in this transition. From a board perspective, this is not a new purchase and is already in our annual budget item, so Dr. Smetana and I will process the new agreement accordingly. There was one question submitted about Parent Square. Are there any new features that the administration will be using?
Yeah, so I mean, you know, we're, you know, thank you, Board of Education, Dr. Skinkis, for bringing this, you know, because I'm really excited for what it can do and how it would help consolidate our communication. I mean, it can do surveys, translations, e-signatures, RSVPs, you could do newsletters, volunteer signup, right? You know, we have all parent organizations use different applications, you know, to service their mission. So Parent Square, you're able to do, I mean, all the things that I mentioned. You can do attendance reminders to remind students to kind of keep coming and come on time. I mean, it's an amazing platform. That's why it's growing, you know, and that's why it's buying out, you know, other applications, but we're excited for what it can do and how it would help our communication overall.
You said it can do translations?
Yeah, it can do translations tools. They're set to automatically translate, so you can set it up by your end and receive messages in your language as a parent.
Yeah, so do we know, like, Spanish or certain?
Yes, I mean, it has the main languages, and you could always, you know.
Okay, is it going through Google Translate or something else that we don't know?
We pay for a different service for our website right now to improve our translations better.
Correct.
Yeah.
Is there something specific that the parents are going to have to do different in order to get it, or will we get them the same, the same notices we've been giving?
Yeah, I mean, we'll provide a notice and a step-by-step guide on how to, you know, get familiar with and create an account, you know, on Parent Square. So we'll make sure we communicate all the directions to our parents.
I'm not sure. I think Patrick was asking, Mr. Williams was asking, like, as if, if you're already set up on Remind, is it just automatic?
Yeah, that's my question.
Transition over, or do you have to start from scratch?
Or is it basic?
Is it a new?
I mean, if it's the same, if they bought it, I'm guessing it's probably something they're just going to piggyback on their own platform, their old platform.
I think Mr. Mann is coordinating this, right? So more information will be coming out before the start of school.
So do we think it'll be ready for the start of school, or this is more once school starts first quarter?
It will be, it will be ready.
Okay, okay.
It will be ready. Again, you know, we are in transition, but our intent is to use it to its max capacity as possible.
So are we notifying parents and students, like, at this week at the residency-type things, or?
Yeah, we'll be, yeah, we'll be informing, you know, I'm personally there. Got you, so yeah, we'll definitely be informing our parents on where we're going.
Cool.
No, I think it's, I mean, it's good. Parent Square seems like a very established organization. I'm looking forward to seeing what the capabilities.
I personally use it with my kids, so I'm familiar with it, you know, as a parent, so, you know, I'll be more than advocate for it, and I'm excited to help our parents and students with it.
Just make sure communications go out accordingly to families so that they're ahead of curve.
Yes.
Maintenance update. We will replace the correct heat exchanger in the HVAC unit for the little theater. It's approximately $42,000. There's about eight to 10-week lead times, so we should be able to conduct this repair in October before we need to turn on the heat. We are still working through a few other maintenance items with our consultants that are not at the board level now, but I will update you accordingly should a significant repair or replacement arise, such as possibly a component for one of our pool units just got burnt out last week, and so we have it running on bypass while we wait for that part, but that should be about a $13,000 replacement for that part. So I got updated on that this morning.
So is any, is this taking place, is the pool piece doing in-house resources, or is this through that?
We have a service provider.
Service provider, yeah.
So they were, our in-house resources were able to bypass the component that fried so that it still runs and we can still have some people using the pool, because we have several of our municipalities that use it for their day camps as well as swim lessons. And so we will be up and running. There should not be a problem. I thought he said we'd hopefully have it before the end of July.
Is the heat exchanger in the little theater, is it done, or is, no heat will come from it at this point until then it is replaced?
Correct.
It is done exchanging heat.
Yeah, yeah, I get it.
No, no, there was no heat in the little theater.
Is it our graduate?
Ready for graduation. There's our graduate. Technology curriculum, no new updates. Facility advisory council, no new updates. Finance, no new updates. Personnel, no updates. Policy advisory. We did meet, and we'll discuss the changes, or actually, we mostly adopted everything as recommended, but it occurred on June 17th, the policy advisory council review discussed the recommendations from IASB. This will be presented later in the agenda. And again, you know, just a reminder, Mr. Caputo, Mr. Williams, but like, a lot of the policies were focused on the recent Supreme Court decision, and so we pay for the service from the school board association, so they have attorneys constantly reviewing policies, state, federal, local court cases, and anything that needs to be updated in our policies. So it's a really good service, and then the fact that, once at the federal level, they went back to the old Title IX ground rules and frameworks, they updated all of our policies. So that's what a majority of the policy recommendations were, and again, I'll cover that when we cover the policy advisory council in the new, or old agenda items.
So, you know, just to piggyback on that, we have hundreds of policies, and we would have had to read through or at least know all of them in depth as an attorney. You know, my eyeballs bleed reading all those, but the service that we pay for, their attorneys constantly are combing through that and knew exactly what policies needed to be updated with that new ruling. And so that's a huge service for us that we don't have to do.
Sounds like something AI should be doing for us.
Yes, yes, you always ask, what is IASB doing for us?
No, she was saying.
I was thinking, AI, AI could be doing that at this point.
Well, I don't know, but then they pointed out, and of course, we always have the option to say, well, it doesn't fit or don't, but, and that's what, you know, the policy, they reviewed all that.
Incorrect, if I stated it wrong. Federal, state, local, so they, this was the federal Supreme Court decision. And that concludes my report for the July board meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Skinkis. We don't have a report from Dr. Smetana, as indicated. Dr. Freitas?
Good evening again, I'm a board member of District 208 and Dr. Skinkis. So right now, we're in session two of summer school for academic programming, and then we also have a lot of athletic camps that are occurring right now, and some enrichment camps as well. And August, the first institute day is on the 11th. It's a non-attendance day for students. On August 12th, Tuesday, will be the first day of school for student. It is a late start. It'll be 8:55 a.m. On the school culture, we have residencies. They start tomorrow. Tomorrow's 8:00 to 2:00. We always start here in the, in the main area. On the 16th, it'll be 11:00 to 7:00. On the 23rd, it'll be 11:00 to 7:00, and then on July 30th, we're back from 8:00 to 2:00. New this year, Board of Education members, is our 10-period bill schedule. So no more letters, our numbers. You know, I know that was sometimes tough with adults, with parents, with students, but it is, we're going to, we're going to share in the welcome packet with our families in residency. It's on our website, but we're going to new 10-period bill schedule. Now we can just focus on the periods, and we're no more letters, so we have taken a step forward when it comes to our scheduling. On August 7th, we have freshman orientation from 10:00 to 11:30 in the main gym. On the 7th as well, that evening, we have our First Parent University Family Welcome Back Night from 4:00 to 6:00. On the 20th, we have our open house from 6:00 to 7:30. As I mentioned earlier, we have athletic camps up and running. On August 11th is the first day of fall sports, and registration is open at Rest Track. Families can go register their kids right now. And in September, we have homecoming game on the 19th from 7:00 to 9-ish, and then on the 20th, we have our homecoming dance from 7:00 to 10:00. Both events will take place at our Canelli Athletic Complex. And board members, that concludes my principal's report.
Thank you. Dr. Freitas, quick question on parent university. Is that for returning students or for freshmen?
That's for all, that's for all.
For all students, okay.
All parents are welcome, and that's when we review our learning management system. We go over Schoology, you know, Google Classroom, so the parents are familiar with where students, you know, get their assignments, where they turn it in.
Perfect.
So parents have knowledge of, so they have knowledge of our systems, and we can support both parents and students.
Great, thank you. Any questions from anyone? Not seeing any. Dr. Skinkis, we had a couple of FOIA requests, I believe.
Yeah, several. So you had the Elizabeth Bush Show, the response was included, requesting the activity request, resource request worksheet. Robert Pross from Waste Management. C.T. Mills, Public Info Access. We usually get this every year, actually probably every quarter, district-level administrators and staff members. Owen Wang requesting a list of graduates, and Owen Wang from the West Cook News in regards to the school math team. So all those responses have been sent, and they're included in the board packet tonight for the board members to review those responses. The Owen Wang, West Cook News, that goes out to every school district in Illinois. So we verified, I want to say last year, or our attorney verified last year for all their clients, that it was not an AI source, it is legitimate news source, but you do get several FOIAs from West Cook News.
They send it to every school in Illinois, not just West Cook?
Nope.
Well, one big groupie to handle, I suppose, right?
Sure, easy enough.
Visitor statements, seeing none. We're going to move on. Consent agenda action items. We do have approval of minutes from the prior meeting. We're going to kind of, Bill, would you lead us off by doing the first consent agenda item read?
Yes. The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, takes the following action on the listed consent agenda items, approves minutes from the meetings held on June 10th, 2025, open and closed sessions, as presented in the July 8, 2025 Board Agenda Packet.
Can we have a second, please?
Second.
Second from Mr. Williams, it's all in favor.
Aye.
No objections? That carries. Under old business, we don't have any life safety items, capital improvement, sustainability matters. We do have a Press Plus policy issue 118.
So as previously stated, we received several comments from Mr. Ruska, just asking some of the most, and if not all, of the changes that were discussed in this packet, 118, as I stated, were related to the federal Supreme Court and the ruling to go back.
Federal court.
Federal court, excuse me, I'm sorry. Federal court to go back to the Title IX groundwork, frameworks that were in place prior to some of the changes, so it just updated our policies. We have always had named complaint managers and Title IX coordinators in our policies, so those are there. We added that information. One of the new requirements is that those people's names are actually listed in the policy. We had listed it by titles, so that was a lot of the changes. We also looked at the new policy, 7:255, in regards to a cybersecurity policy. We also pay for additional coverage from our liability insurance to have cyber coverage. Policy 6150, homebound, in regards to homebound, we do have a structure in place already that provides homebound tutoring by outside source for any of our students that are hospitalized or dealing with medical and mental health issues. And we also looked at policy 6:310 and reviewed our dual-credit, dual-enrollment policy and reflection on how this year went and how next year went, and the policy advisory council is recommending no changes to that. So a majority, if not all, the policies are adopted as presented.
There was one on AI also, right?
Yeah, he did mention that, yes.
That's the cybersecurity and AI policy.
Okay, but also embedded in that one, I think there was a framework, and I think the question was, did that go through all our department heads about how to use the AIs?
Ms. Lindquist and Mr. Connors already did some training for staff last year on Albert and some of our other AI models, and they're going to be doing continual professional development throughout this year.
Okay, so then maybe as the year plays out, because, you know, there's always the fear that you don't have to write a paper anymore, AI can write it for you.
Correct.
So maybe they can give us some information how they're handling these tools and yet guiding students into doing their own writing, being able to use the tools wisely.
So I, I want to say so thank you to Ms. Ruska. She provided comments on the policies, and so when Mr. Williams and I met, we were able to kind of marry up your comments with, with the IASB suggestions. And I would, just to piggyback on what Dr. Skinkis said, there were no real new policies here, there were a lot of revisions. So I think it was, it was a larger. No, we, we, we already had an academic, oh, what's the phrase I'm looking for? We had a policy related to cheating and plagiarism and that kind of thing, so it builds on that.
It builds on it, but I mean, definitely the tool opens up a whole new, you know, opportunity for people to kind of circumvent the difficult art of writing.
Sure.
And, you know, it'll be at the end of the year or at that appropriate time when staff present, it'd be, how are you managing that?
So in regard to the Press Plus Packet, I am requesting that the board approve that tonight. I think we've had this now on the agenda for two or three meetings, and the advisory councils review it. We're ready for adoption if the board can take action tonight.
Is there any additional discussion or questions from anyone? Anything else to add, Patrick?
No.
No.
I feel, I felt good about it. It was pretty thorough.
Okay. In that case, could you read the motion?
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves the Press Plus Policy Issue 118 as presented in the July 8, 2025 Board Agenda Packet. Second.
A second from Mr. Durkin. It's an all in favor. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? The Press, the Press Plus Policy Issue 118 passes. I think they issued a new one coming out, too.
Yes, 119, but that's not adopted till October.
Right.
Probably convene in August.
Do it against. Sure.
Right.
I'll give you a little break.
That one probably includes the spring legislative changes, right?
Correct.
So, thank you very much. And then tentative budget FY 2026, I don't think we have anything to report on this.
No updates at this point. Again, the June 30 actuals will be added for August. So if we see any significant changes, we'll report out on those at the August board meeting. And there is a link available on the website to access the tentative budget.
And I'm sure people have seen the, there's some regular news reports about property tax bill payment delays. The initial indication was 30 days, but they may be going longer than that?
Correct.
So it goes back to us having a solid fund balance and some good financial planning. New business payment of bills. Were there any questions on these?
There were no questions submitted on the bills.
Okay. Any here this evening, or can we move ahead to approve? Okay.
Do you want me to read it?
Would you please?
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves the payment of bills as presented and discussed into July 8, 2025 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Moved in second from Mr. Durkin. We do need a roll call for financials.
Mr. Cookbongo?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Ruska?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes. Visitor statements, second opportunity, seeing none. Board of Education discussion items, I think Ms. Ruska had a quick item to share with the group.
Okay, so we had the planning meeting from the West Cook, I mean, from the Illinois Association of, you know, school boards, and this is the planning meeting for the West Cook, the 40 districts that are in our group. So the fall meeting will be September 29th, I believe, and it's going to be at the Elm Crest, and they did get the Teacher of the Year, Mr. Gomez, to come and present, so that'll be pretty interesting. Many of the members wanted to hear that. And then they're still, the spring meeting will be at Schiller Park. They've had some major renovations, and we're going to get a tour of their renovations. They're hosting. And then they're trying to get the superintendent from the Illinois School Board, from ISBE to come, Tony Evans, I believe, and so that's still, they've made contact, and so that's still, hopefully, going to be possible.
Okay, so keep us posted on the second date, and then the registration for the fall conference, you said, is opening up shortly.
Yeah, the fall conference is already open.
I registered, they had early bird registration. Mr. Ruska already has been registered. Ms. Molo will send out information to the rest of the board, probably starting at the end of this month. And Laura wanted to do a workshop, so we had to sign her up for that, but I will get that in the Friday update, probably next week. I'm out Thursday and Friday, going on vacation this week, so. But for the board members, the conference is in November. I will send a date, so you could save the date. I don't have that in front of me right now.
I've got it. It's always the weekend before Thanksgiving.
It's the 21st, 22nd.
Friday, November 21st and 22nd.
They are prolific emailers, so I think we've all probably received emails from them already.
Yeah, but it's always that weekend before Thanksgiving. It's the weekend they light up the mag mile.
And then there was one other question submitted. AP tests will be reported out. The general AP test record report will be provided when we do the academic report, the school benchmark report in the fall. And there was one general question submitted about scholarships and local scholarships. I provided a detailed answer I got from Ms. August, and she's on vacation, but she did send me that answer, so I provided it and sent that out to the rest of the board this I think that's all, that covers everything. Rest is closed session.
Any discussion or comments, any additional? Looking?
About the scholarships, I just honestly just kind of looked at it as a missed opportunity and just kind of was curious about the connection between our school and the RVEF and how we can just make sure the kids know about this stuff.
So RVEF will come to their board in the fall, and because they're one of the affiliated organization like Music and PTO.
Sure.
I think it's probably a good question to pose to them at that time.
Absolutely.
You know, what are they doing? They're such a good organization, they do this fundraising, they, they used to do the auction event, right?
Telethon, yeah.
The telethon. I think there's been some transition in, in leadership. I think it's a great question to ask them, you know, how we're, how would they maybe suggest helping move people into applying, what they can do to apply? Certainly a lost opportunity.
Yeah.
But one thing that struck me from the note we got from Dr. Skinkis is that local scholarship applications overall are down.
Right.
Which is surprising, right?
Right, and we're all sort of looking down the barrel of pain for our kids' college.
Right, right, right.
I would think.
I looked today on the Student Services website. All those scholarships are already listed.
Correct.
That's great. I, I mean, I think, I mean, I've talked to several people who sit on, on different boards that award scholarships, and a lot of them are, numbers are down, and.
I don't understand it.
Well, it's a question of, it's, honestly, it's probably a question of knowledge of it. Everybody's busy, people miss, people don't think about it until it's too late to think. But I'm just thinking, trying to be proactive as best we can as a district.
Sure.
And, you know, if the, if the money's there and we're leaving it, and we collectively as a, as a.
Beth was going to talk.
Area, leaving it on the table just seems like a real big mistake.
Ms. August, you was also going to talk to Mr. Monte, who oversees the RBF, just to see if there's, one of the requirements had in there that a student had already been accepted to a culinary arts institute, and some of these kids may not know if they're fully committed to going and might study or take it as a minor or.
Right. Well, and I.
So that's really starting to narrow, because we have 500 kids that take it, but that doesn't mean they're all going to be chefs, right?
Right.
What the application deadline happens before you necessarily accept your school.
Well, and it also, I did look at the fine print of that one, and it said that if no culinary students apply, it's open to all applied arts.
Right.
So if you take, if you took a culinary class and you are potentially going to study any applied arts in college, you could potentially qualify. That seems like a great opportunity.
I did the same thing, but then I read the fine print in the actual application, if you click on that, and you need to talk about your GPA and your fine arts classes. So I think maybe there needs to be a little cleanup.
Sure.
On what the requirements are.
Let's make it happen. I mean.
No, I agree.
Yeah, no, I think it's, it's, I'd like to see more applications for all of those. I mean, they're competitive.
Amen.
There used to be a list of all the scholarships.
Yeah, that's what we're.
It still exists.
That's what we're having linked to.
It's not still ready.
Yeah.
And I, I think, I mean, I'm definitely looking at all of these for my kid. And I think it's, I, basically from what I've been gathering, just doing our own research for our own child about looking at scholarships, community foundations are like the best place to find it because there's the, you know, when you're looking at these nationals and statewide scholarships, there's a lot of applicants. But clearly, we're not, if, I mean, money's being left on the table by these community organizations. These are probably the most fertile ground for kids to find money to go to school with.
Okay.
So.
Agreed. And I think it's, it's a, it's a good chance to reemphasize it.
Yeah.
Well, I think we'll continue our outreach. And I know in, at the end of August, typically, you know, our Student Services Department, they do a count on the college, they introduce the scholarships. Then they follow up in February. They go into the English classrooms. You know, followed by that, they have the council one-on-one meetings. And counselors try to pair students with scholarships. So I mean, but I mean, yeah, you know, I think I share the same feeling. When I see a scholarship doesn't go to apply for, right? It is a missed opportunity. I share that sentiment.
And I was curious too, is there any specific assistance? Because a lot of the scholarships I was looking through all have some sort of essay or statement portion. Do we have something within the school that the kids know about that was a system with it? Because I know, you know, they can ask their teacher.
Sure.
My daughter has definitely asked several of her teachers to help.
And I mean, I was, I mean, I echo that sentiment. I think our staff are always there with the students. They want them to get, you know, the money they have a shot for. So I mean, students go to their teachers, you know, they support one another. I mean, the counselors are there. We have, we're all, we're all there for them.
Yeah.
But I think what I'm hearing is we need a little more overt about.
Yeah.
If you need help writing an essay, please see.
We both have a senior right now.
Yeah.
And so our, a program here at RB is Camp College. It's a summer camp that they offer.
Yeah, yeah.
And they're writing your college essays.
Yeah, yeah.
Application essays.
I think that's great.
And so I think the numbers of those students taking advantage of that is not as high. And I don't think, you know, they're thinking about February when they need to be applying for these things now.
We know about this, don't we?
So some of us.
Try not to be a nag, but you know.
Right.
She is my kid, so.
Anything else?